After that, when is the American name? Because it's only his name. And my sister and I were like, don't care about it. And we're like, we're gonna sell him because it's only his name. And he will have power of attorney until he dies.
Good evening. It's 6:00 PM. Wednesday, March 27th, 2024. We'll start our county commissioners' meeting. If you would, please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance and a short prayer.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims from the last month?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to rev- review payroll?
Make the motion to accept payroll is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept payroll as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a copy of the treasurer's monthly report. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We also have a clerk's monthly report.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We also have a weights and measures monthly report.
Make the motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the weights and measures monthly report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have in front of us some food and beverage claims. The first one is for the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. B&amp;W Construction for $5,890.91.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. BW Construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a second one for the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. Atlas Technical Consultants for $3,023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a claim for the food and beverage money for the Jordan Arena Saddle Club. Jacob Stalts was for $3,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Jordan Arena Saddle Club for $3,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two additional claims for food and beverage from the Jordan Arena. The second one is L&amp;S Lumber for $3,444.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. The final one for the Jordan Arena Saddle Club is to J&amp;J Enterprise for $40,000. $40,633.
Motion to approve.
I had to swallow first.
Yeah, I know.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we have the final food and beverage claim is for the historic Shelter House. For Newcastle Flooring, $3,500. $3,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Did you see the claim, actually, the actual claim ticket says? Sorry, I'm backing up on the $40,000. The actual claim. Oh, the, oh, that's, okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. I'm sorry. Did we say aye?
Corey Murphy. We have no Corey Murphy update. Chamber of Commerce. We have no Chamber update. And we have no Josh Estle. Moving on, Henry County Health Department.
I thought she was coming tonight. Uh huh, yeah, she's supposed to be here, so we'll move, we'll come back to her.
I see no one from the Highway Department. The Surveyor's Office, Planning Commission.
You missed Brian.
Oh, Brian's right there. Coroner's Office, you're in a different color, different time zone.
Oh, in your folders, you have a copy of the EMS agreement. It's a generic agreement since money's gonna change hands between the city of Newcastle and the county. Just to provide ALS ambulance coverage for the county. Joel drafted it. The city has already signed and approved that through the Board of Works. So at your pleasure of that approval and signage, then we'll get Debbie to sign it. And I'll make copies and distribute those. Questions on that?
We, we did, we did this because money is now changing hands and we need to have some sort of an agreement, so. I, I, I know Joel's approved it. The city, the Board of Works already approved it as well. I've reviewed it and I will make the motion to approve.
You say you've looked it over.
I drafted it, so.
I should have you worried or? I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. This is an agreement made and entered into between the city of Newcastle through its Board of Public Works and Henry County, Indiana, acting as, with, through the Board of Commissioners. So we're done. Thank you. Do we have anything from the Sheriff's Department? Thank you. Auditor's Office. Clerk's Office, Memorial Park, Assessor's Office, Recorder, Weights and Measures, 911. Brian True.
I would just like to make an official request to see if we could get a credit card for the 911 Department. I spoke to Bobby briefly and talked to the auditor's office about the process briefly, and they said to bring it to a meeting mainly just for convenience for everyone. Instead of using the commissioner's card all the time, we're gonna start doing more training and traveling. Some of the training is just easier to pay for upfront with a card. The traveling, instead of having to come and get the card to book a room and then get the card when we travel. And I know there's only a couple and worrying about being available when we go. We just make things simpler, so just wanted to make that request.
I will make the motion to approve. Go ahead.
Yeah, go, go right ahead, yeah, sorry.
So I'm not saying though, to the credit person, my choice is yours. Bobby and I are now writing out guidelines.
Absolutely.
There's guidelines to go by. Bobby spent two days helping somebody work out theirs. They've got it all worked out. But it seems like we're getting more and more problems with departments with credit cards that we're having problems with because they're not keeping receipts. They're not, you know, we gotta make sure that they are marked exactly where they went, who took it, how much they spent. Because it comes back on you guys. When say Board of Accounts comes and looks at it and that receipt's not in there, it's on me.
Right.
We, we have to make sure that everyone goes by the guidelines.
So you're writing guidelines?
We are going to write guidelines.
Okay, so if you can ha- if you can have them for our next meeting and then we, would we need to approve those guidelines?
I think it's a pretty good idea.
Okay.
But I mean, we, we just, we're running into normal messes. And it's, you know, when, when somebody in my office has to take a whole day or two to fix the problem, that's a problem. Because, you know, we don't have that much time for that.
And if the receipt's not there, we cannot pay anything.
So that's a problem. And if taxes are on it, we can't pay them. So that's the only time people pay taxes is on the state or federal.
Right.
Okay.
Understood. I mean, I couldn't put a claim in anyways if I didn't have a receipt. So I mean, same, same process as general claims, but yes, I understand.
So with that said, I will make the motion to approve, but you guys do the guidelines.
And Debbie explained most of that to me when I discussed it with her, that, all the guidelines. So yeah, whatever you guys think.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve.
Is it approved pending the guidelines or is that what your motion was or?
I guess I could make it the motion pending guidelines. So you can get it after the next meeting?
Sure.
Well, then I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Henry County EMS.
You can do it now.
I have a contract I need to get retro-approved, I guess. We kind of have an emergency situation and I had to get this implemented. I'm sure most of you, or I think all of you know by now, that our billing services kind of dropped us, kind of got caught in the crossfire of another situation and they kind of washed their hands of us. It was immediate. During that process, we realized that they hadn't necessarily been keeping up their end of the bargain per their contract, but I haven't had time to really look into that or take that to Joel. Because I've been busy trying to get a new billing company so that we don't lose. It's, well, we're, we're gonna have a lack in funds that come in. We're just not sure how long that's gonna be. So this is the contract. This is my copy. You guys already have one on file. And it's, I just need approval to go ahead and get that retro-approved by you in a public meeting. It's actually a cheaper rate. It's a longer contract with a 90-day, being able to cancel it for 90 days. And it's a four-year contract, but that doesn't mean I can't cancel it. And it's actually gonna be a quarter percent cheaper to go with this company than, than we had. In the long run, this will have been worth it and it will benefit us. It just necessarily wasn't the right time. It was kind of forced upon us. So we had to take immediate action. It's the only reason it happened prior to a meeting.
And you have reviewed. I, I, I haven't walked side by side, step by step by Mandy, but I've been
Yeah.
in the thick of it.
Right.
So yeah, this med count agreement is, it's, it's going to allow much more flexibility, much more information in their billing while it was sudden and they're working very diligently to get it up and going. I will make the motion to approve the client services agreement.
And you were okay with that, Joel? I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thank you. Angela?
She'll come back down here in, under new business.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We do not have Tim Welsh here this evening, but we have a business that we'll get to later. Are we gonna get to that now?
I can do it now.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it?
Yes, that's great.
So Tim came to our work session today and has presented to us, and Joel and Debbie has a copy of it as well, the Henry County Solar Eclipse 2024 Emergency Action Plan. This lays every, it's got a lot of flexibility because nobody really knows what's gonna take place on April the 8th and what may be needed. But it is required, he is required by the state to submit an emergency action plan for the event. I don't, I don't know if you needed to review it or not. It's just laying out who's doing what and. Yeah. So I mean, he, he lays everything out from emergency management, notifications, severe weather, fire, law enforcement, what everybody's gonna be doing, the communication, communication tree, public health, ambulances. I mean, it's a very detailed of what the plan is. I think not just for the 8th, but I think it might be through the whole weekend. Is that right, Angela? It's through the whole weekend? So I know he presented it to us in the, in the work session. They're expecting 40,000 to 50,000 visitors to come to the county through the weekend. So this has been a long and arduous process for him and others. And I'm sure he's looking forward to April the 9th. So with that said, I will make a motion to approve this so he can submit it to the state.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, I'm gonna have a comment, sorry. I guess I did have one. On the solar eclipse, has anybody sat down and truly thought about how we're doing payroll for the county employees that are gonna be on it? There's all kinds of here, there, everywhere, but no one's came to the auditor's office except.
I, I would say that was the department head. All we did was approve the other.
My department heads came to the auditor's office to ask how she's gonna do payroll. And that's it. So I don't know if anybody set out guidelines as to if, if anybody's came to you guys because, okay.
Nobody has came to us? I know, I, I'm aware.
No, that's, yeah.
I'm aware.
To be a problem.
Yep. Nope. All we did was say, here, you can use our money. It's up to the department heads and whoever else is doing it.
Because we know the ones who aren't county employees, they'll, they're invoicing us.
Right.
Because we don't do their thing. County employees can invoice us.
Right.
Okay, just, let me question.
I think we're good to go on to the quotes and proposals. The first quote or proposal that we have is a Centos Fire Protection Equipment quote.
So these are to replace 16 10-pound fire extinguishers that have either are at or have end of life and one 11-pound fire extinguisher. I believe it's here in the courthouse to replace all of these, a total of 16. Actually, we'll have to get with them and take the tax off, so it looks like it's fifth, I'd have to add it up. Hang on one second, because they did add sales tax and they cannot. Total of 1,574.26. So I will make the motion to approve the replacement of the fire extinguishers. Yeah, minus the sales tax that they have on it, yep.
I will second it. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next one is the Elwood Fire Equipment Quote.
And this is for the YOC. So when we received this, I contacted them. Currently, this is not connected to the fire alarm. And in order to connect to the fire alarm, they have to update this mechanical control head in order to get all of that connected. And that's a total of $1,555.78.
I'll make the motion to approve that one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Elwood Fire Equipment Company for a total of $1,555.78. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Next, we have a piney quote.
This was found during their quarterly preventative maintenance check. The actuator for the hot water fan has quit and will not move anymore. So the quote to replace that is $865. So I will make the motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
The cost is kind of in the middle, Debbie. Oh, do you have two of them? You have two? Oh, okay. Sorry.
I have two piney also.
One of them is $1,122.
Do I only have one?
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, no, mine were stuck together. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, there is, I missed, it got stuck together. Oh, wait. Oh, this is, there was one for fan box 14 and one for 11. So I, I guess I skipped ahead to the $865 one. I apologize. We'll come back to the, I guess we can do them all together, can't we, Joel? Well, I've already made the motion. Did you second them?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we'll move forward and come back to it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
So the next one again was found in preventative maintenance. It's the exhaust fan number 11 and it's $1,122. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept that one.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to piney engineering for $1,122. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Was there two for Centos really? I apologize. Oh, yep. Oh, yeah, the fire extinguisher for the transition center. Yes, there's six of them over there that need to be replaced as well.
I thought you added those two together.
No, I did not. I subtracted the tax off of this one.
First one.
Yeah, no, I didn't add them together. I took the tax off of the first one. So it's $408. So I'll make the motion to approve the second Centos quote.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the Centos quote of $408. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. The final quote that we have before us is for the CollinsFlag.com company. And it's for the purchase of Flags.
Yeah, they're the flags for the cemeteries.
5,040 flags, eight inch by 12 inch for the, be placed by the veteran service officer. The total is $4,384.80.
Make the motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. They'll ask Megan Kraus to come forward in regards to the Women's Recovery Center. Megan Kraus and team.
Make sure your microphone is green. There you go.
Yes, we all have a little bit to share. So we all have unique roles that we're playing and doing, so we just wanted to each share that, okay? So thanks for, thank you for having us. I'm Megan Kraus, I'm the executive director. So I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about my role and what that looks like. I'm the community liaison, so I'll be between the center and the community, letting the community know what our needs are, who we are, and what we do. I'll be reaching out to organizations and churches and individuals to develop partnerships with them. Another one of my roles is oversight of the center. I'll also be meeting with each woman in our center once a month to ensure progress is being made, to make sure they're setting goals and getting their goals met. We don't want this to be an organization that they're just going through the motions and checking off boxes, right? So that's what that meeting will be for. I also have a heart for the families. I think addiction can ravish families and impact families in a very negative way. It's not just the women, but the families that need help. So families who are willing, which we hope are all of them, I'll be meeting with them to work on getting the family unit healthy. So the women have a home to go back to that's going to help with her recovery and support her recovery. and support her recovery. We are, so that's just a little bit about who I am and my role. We are a Christ-focused, Christ-centered organization. Our focus is God and restoring these women back to their God-given potential and their purpose. We also are, some things that we wanted to let you know that we are not, we're not a transitional home and we're not a shelter, which is just things that can get confused, but we are strictly a seven-month live-in program for women who are struggling with alcohol and substance abuse, okay? So, where we are right now as an organization, we have our 501(c)(3) and we have our Board of Directors. We also have our location for our self-sustainable storefront that will help make income for the recovery center. We have that secured, and we're already starting to work on it inside to get it functional. We also have our home for the women on A Avenue, so we have partnered, this is Jim Becker, with Foursquare. We have partnered with him and his team and his church for their double that they used for men who were seeking recovery a few years before COVID and COVID era. So, we're really excited about that partnership, just for like the wisdom, the knowledge that they can bring, the what-to-do, what-not-to-do, what worked, what didn't, what grants maybe that they went for. We also are excited just for their team. They're very, they wanna be very involved, even with volunteers and connecting with our women. That's a big thing we want for our women, is to get connected to people to have healthy relationships with, because that's another thing about addiction. You go, you get out of recovery and you go back to the same old people, and that doesn't work, you know? So, we really wanna get them connected with other churches and people to help them. So, we also, we also did a little bit of other homework. We went around other places here in Indiana to visit. So, we went to Waymaker out in Plainfield, which was a men's recovery center. We went to Hope Indy, which is out on Brookville in Indianapolis. We also went to Crossmont Roads in Richmond, and we're still in contact with her too. But we just went to these places to see how they worked, so we're not reinventing the wheel per se. So, we took from them what we felt like would work for us, you know, when they said, don't do this, we're, okay, we're not gonna do that. We learned from your mistakes. We're also, so I had an addiction with alcohol. Shelley's gonna share her addiction, so we're also bringing to the table what worked for us and how we got healing, and how we have stayed recovered too. So, that's kinda how we're starting to build this program, and Tiffany and Shelley both will share a little bit more in depth of that.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tiffany Youngquist, and I'm gonna be the Associate Director of the center. I personally have adopted four children out of foster care, each who had a mother and father, actually, who had addiction problems. So, I've seen firsthand the devastation that addiction does to families and to generations, and I do believe that what has been destroyed can be restored, and so that's why I'm a part of the Henry County Women's Recovery Center. In my position as the Associate Director, I will implement procedures and processes to ensure the growth and protect the sustainability of the organization. We will start by accepting two women and quickly grow to six or eight within the first year. We're doing this a step-by-step, so that we make sure that we understand what's working and what isn't, so that we can fine-tune our processes as we're growing, and we don't have a stall-out point where we, you know, either can't continue to grow or have to pull back and even get smaller to fix some of our problems. Once in the pro, oh, sorry, our vetting process for the women is gonna be a two-stage process. There'll be an application, and then there'll be multiple interviews with them, so that we're gonna be very serious about who is allowed to come into the program. We wanna make sure that they are dedicated to full recovery themselves. Once in the program, each woman will have a structured day filled with classes, household chores, and opportunities to learn new skills and discover new talents. We believe that as we remove old harmful patterns, we must replace them with new, healthy ones, so we will address five pillars in their lives during their seven months with us. The first is financial literacy. We intend to teach them how to earn money and be good stewards of it. Second is relational health. Understanding how our actions affect others and vice versa is an important part of healing. We hope the women will leave knowing how to develop and sustain good relationships and that maintaining healthy boundaries are, learning how to maintain healthy boundaries that are mutually beneficial. Our third is career and education. We will assess each woman's educational level and meet them there. The goal is that they leave with the ability to go out into the community, find a job because of their improved educational level. Spirituality and wellness are our last two pillars, and those are gonna be discussed next by Shelley Hansen. Finally, I want to mention that in an effort to be a sustainable nonprofit organization, we will have multiple avenues for raising funds. We are applying for grants, planning a fall gala fundraising event for monthly donors, and actively talking with churches and organizations to initiate partnerships much like the one we have with Foursquare. We will continue to solicit donations from individuals, corporations, and organizations through our quarterly newsletter. Our long-term sustainability plan is to open a small storefront on Highway Three in late spring. It will be a discount retail store where Newcastle customers can shop great deals. The women who are in our program can work there once they've been in the program for three or four months, and then the profits of the store will be returned back to the center to fund its operating expenses. Now, Kelly will talk.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Shelley Hansen, and I will be the spiritual coordinator of the house. I feel like I get the fun part, so I'm excited about that. So, my job will entail, hey, my job will entail the health of the women in their spirit, in their mind, and in their body. So, I am uniquely qualified for this position because of my personal story that involves eight years of meth and opiate addiction and twenty-one years of sobriety because of the power of Christ. And I was fascinated by mind renewal and what I now understand as neuroplasticity of the brain, or the brain's ability to heal from trauma and the things that we've been through. So, over the years, I have pursued certification in three different Christian modalities for heart prayer healing, and then just recently, I have received my certification as a brain rewiring coach. For fifteen years, I served on my church's emotional healing team, and, but I will be using all of these techniques in the recovery home. So, along with this, I've also served as a jail chaplain for the last three years, so I've had many conversations with men and women who are struggling with addiction. And in all of every conversation that I have, the common thread is past trauma, past pain, disappointments, things that have happened in their life that they could not get over, and this was also true of me and my story, so it just hit so close to home. So, I want you to, if you'll indulge me, I wanna take you on just a two-minute journey so that I can share with you a little bit about brain rewiring and what we'll be doing. So, this is based on the polyvagal theory, if you've ever heard of it, but we are essentially, we all have three general states of being, or states of arousal in our mind, or a blend of these. And the main one that we should usually be in and stay in is called our social engagement state, and this is, this is part of our parasympathetic nervous system. This is the rest and digest part of our body and our brain. This is where we are full of peace and joy. This is where we are free to engage with the people around us. We can engage in love and just have peace in our hearts. So, in this place is where serotonin, dopamine, oxytocin, and endorphins are all in good supply, okay? So, the next state of being that we can be in is, you've probably all heard of it, that is our fight-or-flight state, right? This is our survival skill. This is our parasympathetic nervous, or our sympathetic nervous system, excuse me. This comes in handy when you're being chased by a bear, right? You're either gonna fight it, or you're gonna run from it, because our body produces adrenaline, norepinephrine, norepinephrine, and cortisol. But trauma, undelved with trauma can keep us stuck in our fight-or-flight state, and when we spend too much time with all of these adrenaline and all of that running through our veins, it's not good for our body physically. It's also, it's just really hard on us. It can cause health problems. It can cause us to be grumpy, angry, bitter, jumpy, anxious, all of those things. The third state that we can be in is our freezer fawn state, and that is the dorsal or the shutdown state. This is when, you know, it's gonna come in handy if you're being run and from that bear, and all of a sudden you can't go anymore, and you have to be really still to make sure that it kinda passes you by. Too long of being in fight-or-flight will put us in our shutdown state, and the shutdown state is when depression, disassociation, detachment, and lack of motivation happens. So, one of the things that's interesting about this freezer fawn is that fawn feature as well. Some of the girls in the jail are very intrigued by this. The fawn is the state of being where you do whatever it takes to keep the peace, whatever it takes to make sure that homeostasis is kept, and when you're in that state for too long, you just become very shut down, very depressed. So, now, our brain and our body instinctively know, it instinctively knows that it can't be in these states for too long, and so we try to get back into our social engagement, and our brain knows that it needs serotonin, dopamine, oxytocin, and endorphins in order to get into that place. And all of us, after high-stress situations, we look for solutions to get us back to the part of the brain where peace resides. Healthy ways that we do this is that we exercise, or we have coffee with a friend, or we have a much-needed date night with our spouse. We have a hug, you know, things like that. Spend time with God, spend time in His Word, things like that that are healthy ways. Some less healthy ways to get a dopamine hit is to play some Candy Crush, scroll Facebook, something like that, right? Shop on Temu. That'll give us the dopamine hit we're looking for temporarily. But then there are the destructive ways to get us out of these painful places in our brain and to get us to find peace, which isn't ever really true peace, and those destructive ways is when we fall into alcohol and drug use and addiction, and it's usually because we've watched our parents do it, or people around us, or we've been in the wrong place at the wrong time in the wrong state of mind. And so, what you can see is that addiction really wasn't the root problem. Addiction was the really poor solution that we chose to try to solve a problem, right? So, we will be doing some deep work to help these women come out of their survival state and come into the part of the brain where healing can occur, and I will teach them how to rewire their brain to be able to experience peace and joy again, and will actually help them to become physically healthy as well. They're gonna learn how to cultivate healthy mindsets even when trials come, because so many times what I've heard from the women at the jail is that I was doing really well, and then this happened. I lost a job, someone died, something happened, and they fell back into those survival states in their brain, and they didn't know what else to do. So, each day, they're gonna be learning how to be healthy, spirit, mind, and body. We're gonna implement brain rewiring techniques, we'll learn ways to calm the nervous system, to produce serotonin and all those feel-good chemicals naturally. We'll be spending time journaling. I'll be teaching them a tool for how to process their emotions and pain. We'll have biblical teaching on the power of forgiveness, things like that, power of words, meditating on positive things, and then, of course, we'll have a basic Bible lesson on the fundamentals of Christianity as well. But I truly believe that this unique approach will be a standout feature of our program, and then Megan's gonna finish this up.
Thank you.
So, I hope you've liked what you've heard so far. We've really put a lot of thought and work into this, and we have big plans for this center. We actually, in ten years, we have some goals, and in ten years, we wanna have twenty acres out in the country, housing fifteen to twenty women, and implementing equine therapy. So, in three years from now, we wanna have secured that property, okay? Last year, last March is kinda when we got all this started. In August, we set our goals. So, last August, we set the one-year goal also of securing our storefront, securing the home, and have raised two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, right now, we've already, we've got our storefront and we have our house, so we have a ways to go with the two hundred and fifteen thousand, but we are implementing systems that are gonna help us reach our goals, and we're very determined to reach those. So, and that's why we're here in front of you all to ask for help for this. So, we're actually asking for it in three phases. Did you guys get the, like, the timeline? If not, I have one for each of you. You, I think, you got it yet. So, right now, we would like to be allotted the forty thousand for the renovation phase. This is going to help this, this house that we have take the beating of eight girls, especially showering and laundry and all those. We then, we're gonna do our part too, especially getting this storefront going, okay? So, we're asking for the renovation money now, then we're gonna work, keep working on the sister business to get it up and going. We're also asking for a grant from HCCF. So, then, in May, July, we would like to ask, that's the second phase, come back and ask for twenty-five thousand for, to furnish this double. So, then we're gonna keep working on the storefront and getting the business sustaining itself, and then we're asking for, so this is third phase, three months of expenses. And then, we are getting the business profitable and holding a fundraising gala to raise one year's expenses. And this could all go faster possibly. We don't know. This is the best timeline we could come up with with the knowledge we have.
So, I have been. A microphone, sorry. So, Megan and I have had many conversations over this, so I'm going to hold off asking any questions until you both have the opportunity to do so. Sorry about that. Phone ringing.
Steve?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Angela, how involved are you with this at all, or?
I just met this couple of women for the first time in person the other day, but I had to talk to these two stories, and I wanted to get to them, and I want to be true.
Obviously, with the time that we've had, the last year and a half, listening to Angela and the different groups that have been spoken, that we've spoken to, and I know Commissioner Plummer has worked on it, it all sounds very exciting and very well-needed in Henry County. Bobby, do you wanna carry on?
Well, so Megan.
So, Megan and I have had several conversations over the last, what, three, four months, maybe?
Yeah.
Time gets away from me. To talk about these different phases, what the need was, what the process that she needed to, you know, to come before us, I think it's a great idea that you've broken it down in phases, because then that gives you guys the opportunity to look for money, grant money, to apply for grant monies, to maybe get money elsewhere as well.
Yeah.
So, I think that was, yeah, I think that was, I think that's a good idea, so we can start, you know, with a phase one and then move into, if needed, the others. I think this is a great opportunity to help the women in recovery, because we need it. You know, we're obviously working on transition centers, you know, that's different. This is the, you know, this is another phase of that, so.
And we hope to work together with the transitional home. If they get a woman that they find out needs recovery, they can send her to us. If we, if our women start transitioning out, they don't have a home to go back to or.
Then they can go to the, yeah.
They can go.
Angela's very happy. Touchdown, is that what you're doing? Yeah, I think so.
What other grant funding are you guys looking at at this point?
What other grants?
Yes.
The Henry County Community Foundation, yes, we're asking them for the same stuff. So, yes, if we, if we get allotted from them, then we, of course, can come back.
Yeah, I think that's what, I think in the descriptor, it says if we get the grant money, then they wouldn't come back for phase two or phase three. Is that what you said? If this, if this grant is approved in full, we will only need the funds from the commissioners to cover the renovation phase. If the grant is denied or partially approved, then they would come back and request for phase two and phase three. But my assumption is, is you are going continually to look for additional funding areas.
Oh, of course.
Yeah.
Yes, our hope is to become self-sustainable, where we do not have to go serve the money and look for the money and not be a distraction.
And you and I had had this discussion, and I don't know if the ladies that will be coming here, I know the goal is that if they cannot pay anything, that they will, but if they can. they can, that was originally one of our conversations, that...
Yes, there is a price to it.
Right.
If they can. If they cannot, they won't be denied, but we will ask, and that's another partnership of churches, is will you support a woman? If a woman comes and cannot, you know, then we can have a list of churches that the woman can make contact to through us or whatever.
Basically, on scholarship, for lack of a better word. On scholarship, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. And what is the cost per month to the residents that will be going there?
The seven months?
Mm-hmm.
We sent a total of $1,500.
For the entire seven months, okay. I don't have any other questions, I'm just waiting to make sure that you guys don't.
We are talking about the opioid settlement?
Opioid funding. So, we'll explain the process. So, tonight, I'm going to, because we haven't taken any votes, I'm going to do a hypothetical that it is approved. This goes to Joel. Joel will update the opioid resolution. It comes back to us, we approve that, and then it has to go to council for approval. So, I don't, I want to set expectations that nobody, government runs slow.
Yeah.
So it would be middle April to, toward the, middle April, because council meets second week now, don't they?
The 10th.
The 10th, okay. So it would be mid-April before anything was finally approved.
Sure. We gave you a lot to take in. For your first time here. You can look us up on Facebook, we have a website and Instagram if you want to go delve in more.
Any further questions?
No, I didn't know we were waiting on Megan.
Oh, yeah, okay. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the up to $40,000 for the, of opioid funding for the renovation phase.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero.
And so, we'll get with you on the process once that gets started, but what you have to do once all that's done.
Thank you for your presentation. Lightkeepers, Angela Cox.
I would like to introduce to you Mary Nicholson-Tate, who was nominee for Citizen of the Year at the Gala the other night. So congratulations on your nomination. Well, thank you, thank you. Mary is the chairman of the Lightkeepers Association. So what we're here to ask about is the previous Westminster property that I had come to you earlier about. We had worked with the guest house, and as you know, everything just needs to be in alignment, and this whole business is difficult business. And so, it just wasn't a good fit, it wasn't the right time. Westminster was still committed to gifting this property to a nonprofit who will carry on the mission of helping the citizens of Henry County. And so, the Lightkeepers of Henry County obviously has their nonprofit status, and it's solidified. So they are accepting the gift of Westminster. And we will still be moving forward with all of the things that we had talked about earlier in the way of a family resource center, minus any overnight housing, because those were some of the issues that we came up against with the last time. So, I'll let you ask Mary anything, or Mary, would you like to tell them anything about the Lightkeepers in particular?
Well, hi, I'm Mary, for those who don't know. The Lightkeepers, we have been a nonprofit since May of 2023, and we are responsible, we do the Juneteenth, the community Juneteenth, we've done it for five years. That's what we do. We try to do things like that to help the community. We want to make sure that we have a resource center for people in the community to get community resources of any sort. And we wanted to carry on the mission of what was already happening at the Westminster building anyway, and just try to be a continuation of that, and make sure we're able to provide for, we've got so many, there's a lot of problems that we could tackle, and there's a lot of needs, so we want to make sure that we're addressing a little bit of all of those things with the community building that's already well-established. So people know where it's at, and they'll be able to come and seek services there. That's what we're hoping for.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, this was, so what you're asking, because we had approved the $30,000 with the guest house in Westminster, you're asking us to change that from guest house to Lightkeepers? It's, money's already been approved, it's just the, to align it with who's actually doing it versus...
Correct. And I don't believe, memory serves me, we kind of put a pin in it, I don't think you actually had the revolution.
I don't think we did, because I think, because we approved it pending acceptance of the guest house, I believe is how it was. Yeah, could you?
Oh, so we have it, okay.
Yeah, but if memory serves me, I think we did a contingent upon...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
So then, you don't have to do that part, you could approve it tonight, and then it could go to the council.
Yeah, instead of, right, instead of the, correct. I, is that, that's correct? We could just change it to the Lightkeepers. So I'm just going to ask some questions while Debbie's doing it. So when you say, I forgot the word, you, family center?
Family resource center.
Yeah, resource center, kind of like a hub, is that what, similar, I'm going to say similar to the hub in Muncie, someplace that people can come into, get what they need, get directed to where they need to go, that type of thing. Even if it's just to sit down and charge their phone or...
Mm-hmm, yes.
Something like that, okay. That's what, that's what I thought you were talking about.
And then we'll work with FSSA, because they pretty much have a roadmap for that family resource center. And I don't know if they have funding remaining in that program yet or not, but we're certainly going to see if they do. And then they will be instrumental, because right now, one of our issues is that we are served well regionally, but it doesn't appear that any of these regional resources have a real office here in Henry County. And so, one of the things at the, there's actually a family resource center and a hub in Delaware County, but they're just so big. But for example, Wayne County is similar in that they don't have an office for Firefly and all these different places.
Okay, so we do.
So the family resource center in Wayne County is a structure, and then it's kind of a revolving office space, if you will, kind of like we have down here on Broad Street. And then, you know, there'd be no charge for them to come in and have events or meet with clients or, you know, you know, anything like that.
And I work for the Heart of Indiana United Way, too. I wear many hats, you can't tell because of the hair. I'm super big. But I, one of the counties that I work in is Fayette County. And there is, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, they have a resource hub there as well, where there's ICAP, they have community voices and everything, just, and there's a food pantry. And ideally, that's, and it's easier because transportation is a huge problem. People can't get to the resources where they're, and I'm a CKF navigator, which is, I help people get state-funded insurance, or if they need help applying for those things, or food stamps, or anything like that, that's the type of services I offer. But ICAP is there, so they get all of those things by coming to one location. And I think that is definitely something that's needed here.
Absolutely, because, yeah, there's a lot of services in Muncie, but getting somebody here to Muncie and back is a challenge.
And this group, then, will be able to coordinate those. So we'll have a schedule, you know, a rolling schedule, where, you know, this group's going to be here once a month, on Wednesdays, and we're going to, you know, work with city transportation. Even having ICAP out here, you know, on 38 is difficult for our WIC moms to come out there, so, you know.
So, looking at the opioid agreement, we did not put it in the agreement because it was contingent upon, we didn't put in there contingent upon, we just didn't update it. So what we'll have to do is reapprove, and then kind of the same thing, it would come back to us on the 10th, and then to the council on the 10th.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, because I know that had three months of...
Yes.
Electric, whatever, so...
Yeah, I wanted to say it was like up to $30,000.
It was, but, so the first we could draw down beginning after...
April 10th.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to come back to this meeting?
Well, no, because we would approve it, you know, approve it, they would, Joel would have the resolution done on the 10th for our meeting and the council on the 10th for their meeting.
Okay, April 10th, okay.
Yeah, April 10th. But no, you would not be required to come back for that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm going to, because we had already made the motion contingent upon, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the up to $30,000 that was approved for the guest house Westminster contingent upon, we're going to make it for Lightkeepers and Westminster project up to $30,000 of opioid funding.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. Thank you.
And yes, congratulations, Mary, on being nominated for Citizen of the Year.
Congratulations. Next, we have a...
Can I stop for one second before Angela decides to go away? Angela, could you come back up? Because I congratulated Mary on her nomination for Citizen of the Year, and, we will, but just come back up here. If you, if you keep delaying me, Angela was nominated with the Chamber for Frontline Heroes, and she was awarded the Frontline Heroes Award at the Chamber Gala last week. So congratulations to Angela for all her hard work.
Congratulations.
Now, I will say, and I think everybody saw it in the paper, because it was her and Coy Atkins.
He's my new guy.
Yep, he's the...
Handsome.
Handsome young man who went into a burning building and saved an elderly lady one morning from a fire. And he was also nominated, and so as Angela was going up, she grabbed him and took him up on stage to honor him. And that was the only standing ovation of the night, and he was awarded...
They had, they had a very nice gift for him.
They had a nice gift for him as well, so congratulations to you.
Thank you. My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. The next business is the Henry County Public Library. Linda Brock has resigned, and we have Kristi Riegel to finish the term. So we are to make a motion, if possible, to finish...
I will make the motion to appoint Kristi Riegel to finish Linda Brock's term on the Library Pub, Henry County Public Library Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. Next, we have a notice of a 30-day period for public comment regarding Title VI, the Acid Rain, in regards to the Duke Transmitting Plant, is that correct? Out on 38?
Yeah.
We have two of them, the first one is...
This is renewal of their current permit.
I'm looking at the next one that we have, but this, the one that I'm missing is the one that is in regards to the Acid Rain. Do either one of you have that?
That is it. It's the one I have, anyway.
I only have one. Yeah, I have the one that says Acid Rain. Is that the one you have? Oh, I have February 29th, yours is March, I don't know which one you've got.
This one is...
Oh, air quality. Oh, that's the air quality for Grady?
Right, there's one for Grady, but the one that, I've looked at it...
And I don't think we need to, this is just informational only.
You don't need to prove it.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just informational only, yeah.
Then we have a second one in regards to Grady, and it's an air quality. They invite your comments on the draft air permit, but they're just, they're just renewing the permit.
Oh, I do have it, it's behind the unified document, so I do have that one.
Okay.
As well.
Okay, so once again, we do not have to make a motion on this, we're just notifying that there is a 30-day timeframe for public to comment on that to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Next, we have the annual GOP brought luncheon on August the 23rd, and to be set up on the courthouse lawn on the 22nd, and then stay remaining set up on the courthouse lawn on August the 23rd for the Henry County Republican Club.
Yeah, I believe Jay Davis sent the request in, this is an annual event. He was just requesting that we use the courthouse lawn, so with that, I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. Next on the agenda is the Client Services Agreement for EMS.
We've already done that.
We already did that. The annual drug healthcare cost reporting.
This, this is, we do this every year, we allow them to do all of our reporting, and it's just saying that we are engaged in drug cost reporting to completely submit the required reporting for our health plan. So I will make a motion to approve contracting with Unified to do the annual report, or agreeing to, there's no additional cost to it, so.
Second.
Motion's been...
Oh, I take that back, there is, it's a $2,000 cost for $2,000.
No, I don't want to second it.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
Yes, that's right. Good.
I liked it better when it didn't cost me anything.
Well, sorry, I forgot. I didn't see the cost at the bottom.
So a motion has been made.
I'm seconding it.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. Next, we have a document. It's an intent to purchase commercial property. The Henry County Commissioners have title to a property that's referred to as the Walmart Outlot. It is located at 3217 State Road 3, directly out the front door of the Walmart. There's a place where it used to be a car wash, and the Henry County Commissioners have received an intent to purchase that property for $280,000. And what the Commissioners need to do is to make the decision as to whether or not we will agree to move forward, which means that it's not a complete done deal, but they'll, the real estate agent will have an opportunity to discuss with the potential buyer, and there'll have to be inspections done and so forth, and then we'll see what happens. But it's, it's our, is it the mood of the Commissioners to approve this intent to purchase the property?
I would say yes.
I will second that, if that was in the form of a motion.
Yes, that was a form of a motion.
I will second that.
The yes motion was seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The center point additional easement that's needed, Laura is not here, correct?
No, she is not.
No.
My understanding, this is kind of a, it's in the grass area just off Garner Street. It was originally intended to be, my understanding, up next to Blue River, but there are existing utilities already there, so they needed to move this out a little farther. I think right now, that grass area just off of Garner is, uses a parking lot overflow for the football field, so I don't think it's going to hinder anything, it's only supposed to be 10-foot by 10-foot. So I would make a motion that we approve this.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. We have an appointment. It's been recommended that for the Public Defender Board, that Kyle Allen be appointed.
I spoke with Kathy Eke a couple of weeks ago, they had somebody step down, and she asked for an appointment, and it was suggested Kyle Allen. I called Kyle, and he was accepting of the appointment if we approved, so with that, I will make a motion to approve Kyle Allen to the Public Defenders Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three-zero. We have a resolution number 2024-03-26, in parentheses, 003, a resolution authorizing real estate, real property to the Rede, to the Redevelopment Commission of the City of Newcastle.
I would probably suggest you read, read the resolution. It's in number seven.
Do you want me to read it, Joe?
No, I'll read it. Resolution authorizing, authorizing the sale of real property to the Development, Redevelopment Commission of the City of Newcastle. Whereas, Henry County, through its Board of Commissioners, is the owner of real property, commonly known as 107 South 12th Street, Newcastle, Indiana. Whereas, the Redevelopment Commission of the City of Newcastle wishes to acquire the real estate for the purpose of redevelopment of the city of Newcastle. And whereas, a transfer of real property between governmental entities may be made upon terms evidenced by substantially identical resolutions adopted by each governmental entity. And whereas, the Redevelopment Commission of the City of Newcastle has adopted a resolution subs, substantially similar to this resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County as follows. The Board of Commissioners of Henry County shall transfer the real estate to the Redevelopment Commission of the City of Newcastle in exchange for a payment in the sum of $21,500. Effective date, this resolution shall be effective upon passage. Repeal it. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Serviceability. Any provision herein contained which is found by a court of competent jurisdiction to be unlawful or which by operation of law shall be deemed unforeseeable, unenforceable, shall be omitted by the rest and the remainder of this resolution. To the extent feasible, shall remain in full force and effect adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County by a vote of... Do I have a motion?
I'm make a motion that we accept this resolution.
And I will second that. Joel, did we talk about it in our last public meeting about the process with the, that building? I don't remember if we did.
We did one way or the other.
Yeah. So, this is the annexed building, and we were able to get it back. And after a long process, we refunded Mr. McGlorry his money per the agreement. And so, that's why we have this, and we're moving forward. So, I did second that with some discussion.
Did you second the motion?
I did.
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana by a vote of three to zero this 27th day of March 2024. Anything from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's adjourned.